Okay, in the absence of the chairman, I'm gonna call the meeting to order of the Planning and Zoning Commission, regular meeting and public hearing in the Village of Riverside, Wednesday, May 23, 2017. Sonia, could you call the hall?
Commissioner Scanlon?
Here.
Commissioner Lesniak?
Absent.
Commissioner Marhol?
Here.
Commissioner Mateo?
Here.
Commissioner Mendoza?
Here.
Commissioner Pilleter?
Here.
We have a quorum. In the absence of our chairman being here this evening, Commissioner Mateo has volunteered to chair the meeting, so if somebody can please make a motion to appoint her the Chair Pro Tem.
So moved?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Commissioner Mateo, take it away.
All right, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the April 26, 2017, meeting?
So moved?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'll abstain. Any comments from the audience? General comments? Trustee Pollock, do you have anything to relay to us?
No.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and call, open up the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All righty. If there's anybody here who wants to speak regarding the public hearing, which I will first describe, so we'll open up the public hearing, PG 17-05, regarding a text amendment to add animal shelters as a special use in the B1C Commercial Zoning District, and a concurrent request for a special use for a rescue shelter for ferrets at 3242 South Harlem Avenue. If anyone wants to speak to this matter, can you fill out a witness slip, hand it to Director App, and be sworn in?
They're on the podium up there, sorry if you want to fill them out.
I guess we're not formally available for questions if there are any.
Okay, well, let's get everyone sworn in who may speak and may be asked a question. And then typically, we would want you to kind of make a presentation, just to explain what you're seeking and such, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you have the original document?
Oh, yes, I do. So if you guys could raise your red hands.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is true and accurate to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Thank you. Yes, I do.
Shall we fill this out?
Do you have their names, or do you need names?
I think I've got everybody here's names, yes.
Okay. Thank you. And then Sonia, if you can give us a summary?
Certainly. You have before you, and I believe I provided you an updated one, because there was a bit of a typo in there, but we have before you a proposed text amendment regarding animal shelters. We're proposing to make them a special uses in the B1C Commercial District. And as you said, concurrently, there's a request for said special use for the location at 3242 South Harlem Avenue. A public notice was posted in our local paper on Wednesday, May 3, pursuant to requirements, and a mailing was sent to the surrounding property owners within 250 feet. Currently, our zoning ordinance does not allow animal shelters in any of our business zoning districts. Petitioners are proposing this text amendment to allow them in the B1C Commercial Zoning District, which is where this property is located, at just a little bit north of Burlington on Harlem Avenue. We are proposing that they would be only as a special use in the B1C District, and they are also requesting that special use should the text amendment be passed. The proposed text amendment is drafted by staff, creates a definition of animal shelter based on the state statute definition. It also adds it as a special use to the B1C Zoning District in the standard, in the, not bulk standards, in the use table. And it also provides for standards for the use, and the Use Standards Chapter, that would require them to meet noise standards of the village code, state licensing requirements, and it would not permit any outdoor facilities associated with any animal shelter. Staff reviewed some other communities in the area, and most do not specify allowing shelters. They're sometimes combined with kennels or with boarding as uses. These uses are typically not permitted uses in central business districts, and can be permitted or special uses in larger sort of community shopping districts. The petitioners, which is the Greater Chicago Ferret Association, are proposing to move their rescue shelter for ferrets to 3242 South Harlem, which is about an 1,800 square foot commercial space in a multi-tenant commercial building. They rescue and place ferrets for adoption, and have a state animal shelter license, and currently operate in Lyons. Their application states that they are run by volunteers Monday through Friday to care for the ferrets. However, it's open to the public only by appointment on Thursdays, Saturdays, and Sundays. Petitioners have provided some pictures of their existing facility and some background information on ferrets and their organization for your reference. They're attached to the staff report that you received. Members of GCFA are also here to answer any questions that you have this evening. This is an existing commercial building where they're proposing to locate. It does not have any off-street parking as part of it, however, there is on-street parking available. The commercial building contains some other tenants, including the bartending school, clothing store, comic book store, and a psychic. The building is adjacent to the bank, and has residences located behind the building. What would that be, Harriken?
Harriken.
So there is a R1A zoning district immediately behind it. Should the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of the text amendment and the special use, staff recommends the following conditions be applied: that the special use for an animal shelter is limited to the operation of a ferret rescue shelter; that a building permit or occupancy permit must be obtained by the petitioner; that a copy of their state license must be provided to the village; and that the ferret rescue shelter must comply with all Riverside codes. In your staff report, you have what the provisions are in the code pertaining to text amendments, as well as the findings for a special use. The provisions for a text amendment are just sort of standards for you to use as you discuss this. You don't have to meet all of the standards in order to adopt the text amendment. And then you also have the findings for the special use. So you should be rendering your decision based on those standards. With a special use, you are allowed to add any sort of conditions that you feel appropriate. So if you think there's anything else that needs to be added in addition to what staff has recommended, you can certainly add those to your motion as we discuss this. As I said, the property owner is here, as well as representatives from the Greater Chicago Ferret Association to answer questions that you have, and I am here as well. So that is all I have.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Anderson, you're the president of the association, is that right?
My name is Ethel Rodriguez, and I'm the treasurer.
Treasurer, right. Apologize for that. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
Just take note of the fact that we are a 501(c)(3), and part of our purpose is to educate the public on ferrets. So besides adopting, accepting surrenders, housing unwanted ferrets until they're adopted, we also do community outreach. We do library programs, scout programs. We have regularly participated in the Lyons Fourth of July Parade in the past. So aside from that, all our other activities are done off-site.
Commissioners have questions for Ms. Rodriguez?
Have you ever had any complaints from your existing location? That you know of?
No, absolutely none. We're a very low-key storefront, because we don't want anybody dropping off things when we're not open. So our presence is somewhat less visible than normal.
Does that imply that you don't even have?
Oh, we have a sign, but it doesn't glow.
About how many staff are typically there, volunteers or staff, on the days that you're open?
There are times when there's one person there, there are times when we have up to seven. It just depends on the time of day and the availability of the staff. Then we have schools that come in with their older, we have a special needs school that comes in and brings three or four of their students, and they help us out on Tuesdays.
Thank you.
I remember, I think it was in the 90s, when ferrets became very popular as household pets. Has that demand or popularity decreased since that period of time?
It's more or less stabilized, and the purpose of that is there are more products available to people, so it's easier to get good housing for them, good food for them, all the amenities that they need. It used to be very difficult, you had very limited availability of that kind of thing. But this is our 30th year as a shelter, so we pretty much have seen the peaks and the valleys.
And how would you describe the number of rescues that you have currently versus the last five years? Do you have a lot more now, you have less? Is it inconsistent?
What happens, especially this time of year, with kids going off to college, we have an influx. And then come, the kids go back to school, people have more time at home, because their children have other things to do, we adopt a lot more out. Right now, we're starting our summer peak.
On average, how many rescues do you have?
I'd say on an average, we have 75 in-house. We've had as few as 50, and we've had as many as 115.
Okay. Okay. So I know that you made a presentation in an earlier commission meeting, but this is your opportunity, that was kind of a just informal, so this is your opportunity at the public hearing to kind of tell us things officially for the record, and I know one of the things that you'd mentioned before was how ferrets don't make any noise, so did you want to reiterate any points like that?
With your indulgence, I'd be happy to re-present that. Okay. The Greater Chicago Ferret Association is a 501(c)(3) organization dedicated to the rescue of abandoned, abused, and no longer wanted domestic ferrets. The organization operates with 100% volunteer labor, and is financed 100% by fundraisers, donations, adoption and surrender fees. The purpose of the GCFA is to rescue domestic ferrets that would otherwise suffer from neglect or abuse. All ferrets surrendered to the GCFA receive medical attention needed by a veterinarian, and are evaluated for placement. In addition, the GCFA mission is to educate the public about owning and caring for a pet ferret. Not everyone would find this pet acceptable, and should be aware that prior to buying or adopting one, what the animal requires. The GCFA has programs available to organizations interested in educational programs about ferrets. We have participated in the Lyons Village Parade for the last few years, have done library programs when requested. Things you should know about ferrets that may affect zoning: ferrets sleep 20 hours a day, but need exercise and human contact when awake. Ferrets are de-sexed and de-scented before ever being made available as pets. Overpopulation is thereby a non-issue. Ferrets are basically non-vocal, they duck, which is kind of like a cluck, when excited, and squeak when threatened. Excessive noise is a non-issue. The shelter is available to the public by appointment only. Adoptions are done on Thursday, Saturday, and Sunday, only by appointment. Surrenders are done as necessary, and again, by appointment. The shelter is staffed by volunteers as their time is available. There are rarely more than six people at the shelter at a time. This usually happens when the adoptions are in progress, and volunteers are cleaning and exercising the ferret in playpens. Ferrets are not allowed to run at random, because they are small, curious animals that have no fear, and they would be subject to harm. A ferret that escapes into the outdoors will not last more than 24 to 48 hours without being killed unless they are found and rescued. This information is submitted in hopes it will assist you in determining and accepting our zoning needs. Thank you.
Is there parking behind your building?
No.
So what types of deliveries do you have, in terms of food or other equipment?
It comes UPS, FedEx, or a volunteer brings it in, depending on what the commodity is.
Great. And can you describe how you get your other volunteers besides the schoolchildren?
People that are committed to ferrets, volunteer like myself, Steve, we volunteer our time. We also get community service from the Circuit Court. That's pretty well how we do it.
Are there any special requirements or needs that you require for waste disposal?
No, garbage. A ferret's urine is non-acidic, and we use wooden pellets that you would normally put in a stove, that's our litter. So they defecate in the litter, and then that is disposed of in the garbage. And it's rather ecologically sound, because it breaks down. There's, the pellets are sawdust to begin with.
One of the standards we need to consider is that the proposed text amendment will benefit the residents of the village as a whole, and not just the applicant or the property owner. So can you describe other potential ways that Riverside could benefit from the shelter moving from Lyons to Riverside?
Well, it is a unique situation. To my knowledge, we are the only ferret shelter in the state of Illinois. There are home-based that come and go, but we're a 30-year organization, and the only one in the state.
But I'm trying to understand how that's going to help Riverside residents?
Well, it'd just be something they could brag about.
Fair enough.
I don't think we'd be a detriment to the village in any way, and as for being an asset, we definitely have room for volunteers, so any community members that need to find volunteer work, we can supply it.
And potentially a destination for people, you're saying, because it is the only shelter in Illinois, so potentially in the surrounding area, people could come from Riverside as a destination, is what you're saying?
No, any of your community members that need or want to do volunteer work, we'd be able to.
Or people wanting to adopt or surrender ferrets?
Oh, adopt, yeah. Yes, that is correct.
The space that you're considering, is that currently occupied or vacant?
Vacant.
Do you know how long it's been vacant for?
I have no idea.
Sonia, do you?
Jane, can I answer that question?
Sure. It's been vacant.
Can you go up to the podium, please, because the microphone won't pick you up?
It's been vacant for approximately the last four or five months, but the previous tenant had not paid rent since February 2016. So we had to go through the eviction process, you know, to make it all, do it correctly.
And what was the occupant before, what was the business?
He was a furniture restorer, so literally, yeah, restoring furniture.
Okay. And how long was that business a tenant there?
He was there for approximately six years, plus or minus, but approximately six years.
I have a question that maybe the two of you can tag-team with, but maybe the two of you won't be able to answer it. Any idea how the two air handling systems compare to where you currently are and your building? Of course, thinking about, will the ferret odor get outside?
Ventilation, and so on and so forth. Well, I'll just say, and I'll hand it to Ethel, or Steve. Before we even considered leasing to the GFCA?
Close enough.
Or GCFA, sorry. I literally went over and looked at their shelter, their unit, and felt that our square footage, and the ventilation and so forth, without giving specifics, was more than adequate compared to what they have, so it's... Steve, do you want to speak?
Thank you, Steve Malik, I'm the volunteer shelter director. The new facility over here in Riverside will be much better for the ventilation, it's a much bigger room, it's sort of like this, right now, we have like an eight-foot ceiling, so it's gonna be better for ventilation, it'll keep down any illnesses or viruses that go around, so it's gonna be a much more sanitary location. And also, if I may, moving to Riverside will bring very positive exposure to the village. I mean, I think I've already had some good press in the local paper about this, I think it got everybody a little bit excited, but we are the only non-home-based ferret shelter in the United States of America, not just in Illinois, as far as we know. Everything else is in someone's basement, their garage, or attached facility. So, and we have people coming from all around this, the tri-state area, to come and do adoptions. We have people from outside the tri-state area asking us if we adopt that. Sometimes they ask stupid questions, like, can you ship a ferret? But, you know, we don't UPS them or anything, but, so I think it's gonna be a very good experience for more traffic coming into your village. Right now, everyone's driving by this, your village, going to Lyons, you're coming back, so I hope that explains it a little bit better. Thank you.
Further to Commissioner Mateo's question, do you happen to know if the air handling for this specific unit is tied to the air handling for the other units in your property?
No, it's all individual. So each unit has their own AC?
Intake.
HVAC.
Okay.
And they pay their bills independently, so yes, it's all very independent.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay. Somebody like to move to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, would somebody like to make a motion to recommend approval or denial for the text amendment?
I'll make a motion to approve the text amendment as recommended by staff. Second.
And then, before we move on to discussion, is there a motion to recommend or deny the special?
Let's deal with this one first, and then we'll go on with the motion. And Sonia, did you want to clarify about the chart and the P versus S?
Oh, yes, so in the chart, there was, for some reason, it got copied in as a P instead of an S, so in the chart, the one you have before you, it shows animal shelters as a special use only in the B1C District, and then not permitted in the B1TC District.
So it should be an S.
Correct.
Okay. And I think she distributed one that's hasn't corrected.
Okay, oh, that one, okay.
We'd like to start the discussion.
Sandra, how, so this definition of animal shelter tracks the state definition you said?
It basically tracks the state definition. They, however, lump in animal hospitals in part of their definition, so we did not include that part as part of our definition, because we kind of regulate veterinary clinics and stuff through our professional offices, I believe, or personal service establishments, I think actually, is where it talks about veterinary offices and clinics, so.
Would kennels or borders fall under this definition, or no?
No.
Okay.
But in the police chapter, there is a definition of a kennel as a place with two or more domestic animals, and that is prohibited within 100 feet of a residential district. So do we want to explicitly say an animal shelter is not a kennel?
I think that would be appropriate. I mean, it does talk about it being for renumeration and things like that, so I didn't necessarily felt that it explicitly prohibited them through that, but we can certainly, you know, recommend to the board that that definition be modified to explicitly say that kennels shall not include animal shelters, as defined herein, shall not include animal shelters.
So you would put it in the kennel definition versus the animal shelter definition?
It's under the police code about, I believe, kennels and pastures, or stables, I believe.
Right, but you would make the distinction there, as opposed to?
Yeah. In the zoning definition, right. I believe we do have kennels defined in our zoning ordinance, so.
Okay. I guess we would just make a clarification to that village code section to show that that didn't apply to the animal shelters.
Have we received any comments from any of the neighboring?
I have not received any comments or phone calls from any neighboring businesses or the residents to the rear.
I have a little bit of a concern about the parking, and I meant to go over and look, but I haven't, I didn't have a chance prior to the meeting. Of like, how, do you happen to know, like, how heavily congested it is in terms of street parking in that area?
There is parking there on the weekdays, I think, you know, it does tend to be somewhat used in that area. I believe the parking kind of begins right where that building is, because otherwise you have the entrance to the drive-through for the bank to the south, so I don't think there's any parking that close to the intersection, so that's about where the on-street parking starts. And it does get used. I'm not sure that it's heavily used over the weekends, when perhaps they would be having more of their visitors coming, so like a higher traffic load, but it does get used, but it's not, I haven't heard too many complaints about the parking in that, in that area. Sometimes, some people will use it for commuter parking, but, you know, we can take it for them, people are exceeding the hour limit out there, so.
And they're not required to provide parking, correct, because of the existing building?
Right, it's an existing building, so they're not required to provide parking if they don't currently meet the code. And as we're looking to amend, actually, as the code reads for a building 3,000 square feet or smaller, they would not be required to provide any parking at this point, and they're only required to provide one per 400 square feet for the square footage that's over that 3,000 square foot threshold, so I'm not exactly sure how big the building is. It's over 3,000 square feet, but the building as a whole, the building as a whole.
Yes, it's over 3,000.
So they would, you know, technically, they would be, as a new building, would have been required to provide parking, but at this point, they're not required to add it unless they were doing in addition to it, or changing the use.
Okay.
I'd say I understand the concern with regards to parking, but that's going to apply to any use in this building, not even specifically what we're talking about. And if we regulated it any more severely, I think we'd end up preventing any business from moving into that site.
No, I concur with that, I just, you know, in general, that really is my only, my only concern, is a little bit about the parking.
Can I just say? Oh, sure.
There's an agreement with the bank.
Can you go up to the podium, please? So they can catch you on the video with the microphone.
As a proposed tenant, that was our concern too, was the parking, but we were assured by Janine's partner, Jenny's partner, that the bank has authorized overflow parking in their lot. So that's not that far a distance, it's like a quarter block away.
Okay, great, thank you. Wanted to point out that noise is addressed in the use standards, odor is addressed in Chapter 7 on health and sanitation, so it hasn't been an issue in the past, but if it ever did become an issue, it's already addressed by our code. Other thoughts?
I think it's a non-standard use, but I have no opposition to it. I haven't seen any... I haven't seen any detriment to allowing them to operate at that location.
I agree with that. As do I.
Okay. Sounds like we're ready to...
Ready for a roll call? All right. Commissioner Scanlon?
This is on the text amendment.
This is on just the text amendment. So Commissioner Scanlon?
Approve.
Commissioner Marhol?
Approve.
Commissioner Mendoza?
Approve.
Commissioner Pelletier?
Approve.
Commissioner Mateo?
Yes.
All right, that motion passes.
Can I get a motion to recommend approval of the special use?
Motion to approve the special use.
Second. Any discussion? Any potential conditions to place on it? Trial periods, anything?
It'll be limited to a ferret shelter. Can't turn into a...
Right, so my...
Kangaroo shelter or something like that.
My proposed recommendation was that we specify that the special use for an animal shelter is limited to the operation of a ferret rescue shelter, so that part would be covered, if we wanted to adopt my recommended conditions in there.
I apologize, I didn't go through the standards for the text amendment. Too late, we already voted on it, but we also have standards to consider for special use. Are there any in particular that anyone wants to discuss? The building already exists, parking is not an issue. It hadn't been denied previously.
The operation seems like it fits...the intensity of use seems like it fits with the rest of the businesses in the area.
Yep, I've got no concern.
I didn't have any concerns about those special use standards.
Sonya, it looks like we're ready to call a roll again.
Commissioner Scanlon?
Approve.
Commissioner Marhol?
Yes.
Commissioner Mendoza?
Approve.
Commissioner Pelletier?
Approved, though I just want to clarify that it's with your recommendations, including your recommendations. Approved.
Is that...are we okay with everybody?
Yes.
Okay. And Commissioner Mateo?
Yes.
All right, that motion passes with the staff's recommended conditions outlined in the staff report.
So those are recommendations from this body that move on to the Village Board of Trustees. So Sonya will let you know when the board will consider it and they have the final decision.
Thank you all for...
Thank you so much.
All right, just as clarification, all text amendments do have to go to the Preservation Commission for their comment to the Village Board as well, so this will be on their June agenda, along with the other text amendment we discussed at the last meeting. So they have their regular meeting in June, so both of those will be before them for comments, and then it'll go to the board meeting, the second meeting in June, for final approvals. So that's kind of the next step, and then we'll be at the board level, so...
And we have a Fourth of July parade as well, so...
You have to send us notification. And please consider yourselves all invited to our brand opening.
Yes. One step at a time. Thank you.
Okay, optimistic. Thank you so much for your comments.
Do we have any old business?
No.
Do we have any new business?
No.
All right. Do you have any information for us?
I do have an update from the booth book.
We do have our CMAP meeting coming up next week, Wednesday, 6:00 p.m. I believe we're going to be in the auditorium upstairs, so if you can make it, please let me know, because they're looking for a head count. But this is their On22050 meeting, so they're just looking for kind of some of the area communities, for their commissioners and board members to be there to try to work through, I think, kind of the questions and stuff for what they're looking to achieve with their comprehensive plan for the Chicago metropolitan region.
So what's the format of that meeting? Is there a presentation? Is it an open house? What's the...
I believe it is technically open to the public, but specifically, they're trying to get, you know, commissioners and board members from the area communities in there, but they do have their format that I believe they're going through. So they're kind of set in the agenda, and they have their kind of points that they're going to be trying to get through, related to their comprehensive plan, and get our input on things like, you know, alternative energy, you know, aging in place, and some of the other things that their walkability, that they're trying to set as priorities for their comprehensive plan.
Very nice.
So that's about all I have for informational items. If you haven't gotten back to me and you want to attend, please let me know, so I can get them a head count. Excellent.
Is it a one-hour meeting, or, I mean, is there a timeframe?
I haven't been...
Do you need to be there at 6 o'clock?
As close as you can get there, I think, probably, in case it's over by 7. I don't think it's a...it'll probably be more than an hour, but...
Motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.